Hello, everybody. Thank you for joining us for tonight's Library Board of Trustees Candidate Forum. My name is Steve Slavik. I'm a librarian here and I'm going to be doing a general overview, sort of an introduction to what we're doing today. Before I do so, I'd like to give you a little bit of idea of what the library's role is in this election. So I'm gonna do some reading. It's not much, so don't worry. The Edison Public Library is committed to maintaining neutrality in the electoral process and has not endorsed any particular candidate for elective office. We are aware of the unauthorized use of the Edison Public Library logo in campaign materials of candidates running for the Edison Public Library Board of Trustees. We want to assure our community that we did not authorize the use of the logo for campaign purposes and that we have not used any resources to support or oppose candidates for elective office, as doing so would be a violation of state law. The library is also committed to ensuring that all candidates for office have an equal opportunity to campaign. For more information, please contact Library Director Mary Medjo. Okay, so what I'd like to do is introduce our candidates. We originally had hoped to have three of them here today. I will introduce the first two, Ellen Finesio.
Yeah.
And also Maria Sinculi.
Thank you.
Sinculi, thank you. A gentleman named Ruben Rolles was hoping to be here, but we're calling at the last moment and he had to unfortunately miss this event. We're hoping that we'll have some information about him and his candidacy, perhaps on our YouTube channel. That's to be determined tomorrow. I also wanted to make mention of a few of our other candidates for this election. We had a written response and from one of them named Christopher Pudalek, who wrote, "With regard to the upcoming election, I teamed up with Sophia Neri and Donna Rabeletti in our campaign efforts. I believe it is our general consensus that we forego the candidate forum, believing our best efforts will be spent with door-to-door canvassing and relying on our combined network of friends and family here in Addison." All right, so now with that taken care of, what I'd like to do is introduce you to Missy Martin. She is a professor of political science at the College of DuPage. And I please ask if anyone has any questions, please hold those until the end of our forum. Thank you.
Thank you guys for coming. I think it says a lot. I think we should say first, it says a lot that you're taking the time out of your night to come here and to listen to these candidates present themselves. As a political science teacher, we're always hammering the importance of participation. So thank you for coming and listening to these candidates. We have nine questions for the candidates. They'll be given 90 seconds to answer the questions each, and you'll also be given 30 seconds to rebut if you choose. We would ask if you have any questions that we hold until the end. We do have time at the end if you all have questions, and then the same rules will apply for that as well. We did a coin flip on my phone with an app, and Maria won the coin flip and she has decided to take the first question. So with that, we will leave here. Maria, what motivated you to run for the Library Board and what qualifications do you have that set you apart from other candidates?
I'm currently running for my second term in service as President of the Edison Public Library Board. I also grew up in the community. I worked here as a children's associate. I apologize. I also work as a children's associate here at the Edison Public Library. A lot of what motivated me to work here is I worked in the schools. Thank you. I worked in the schools as well as a school social worker and I see the importance of what collaboration can look like working within a, working within a public library.
Thank you. Ellen, same question. What motivated you to run for the Library Board and what qualifications do you have that set you apart from other candidates?
Hi, I'm Ellen. What motivated me is really my community. I've been here most of my life. I'm raising nine, two girls here and I just really believe in what the library does and I want to just make sure it keeps happening and whatever I can do to contribute to that. Qualifications, I mean, I'm a community member that cares. I'm in theory a competent human being. I'm raising two little children, so let's see, fingers crossed. But no, my qualifications are just my real deep intimate care and desire to just keep moving on forward and keeping us keeping us helping everyone we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Second question. Ellen will go first. Do you have a library card? How often do you use the library and what programs or services or collections do you use most often?
I have a library card. We're here, I would say, once a week. I'm here also otherwise because I do some work with literacy at DuPage. So I meet some of my students here. So was that all of it?
What programs or services do you use?
Just the use of the library. I've been, yes, just the general use of the library, but I advocate for it all the time with my students and just conversations in general. So all the services that we do offer, yeah.
Thank you. Maria, did you have any to repeat?
No. I had a library card. I will tell you since I was, since I can remember, I was probably five. When I had a library card, it was an opportunity and a window to literacy. You know, my mom grew up not learning how to read, so working, so getting a library card meant a lot because we had access to things that we didn't have access to at home. So I've had a library card for a very long time. Also, I am here a lot. Sometimes I feel bad because I'm here too much and sometimes they do have to kick me out. I get to use the study rooms because I worked on my doctorate during COVID, so I had the opportunity to use the spaces that we have. I also check out materials all the time, interlibrary loan books, audiobooks, the library of things that we have. We just have so much that we offer. Unfortunately, we don't take advantage as much of those programs that we currently have, but we have so much to offer here in the library.
Great, thank you. Maria, we will start with you. What do you see as the library's strengths and which areas do you see a need for improvement?
As far as strengths, honestly, I think it's our collection. We offer our collection in a variety of languages, which is why I think not us coming up with Swan will have access to more resources, but now we'll have access to all our resources. And one of the things that I commend our library for are the length, the multiple languages that we offer our materials in, which has been a very great area that we could work on. I don't really have to think about. I think it's our spacing. You know, I definitely think our, just our spacing within the library and how we offer programs is something that we're working towards with renovation within the library. But honestly, I think we offer a lot and we're always evolving as a library to offer more.
Thank you. Ellen, do I have to repeat?
Oh, no. I can't. I'll start off by saying I can't comment on a weakness because I don't have enough intimate knowledge, I would say, and also because I've only had good experiences, which I would put in the strength category. The website is amazing and I go on enough websites in the area to study about. Anyways, it's just very user-friendly. I'm 40, but there's like a 95-year-old person trapped in here and it's technology does not want like, so it's just, it's very user-friendly. It makes me feel very comfortable and I'm just amazed at the layout and how easy it is and how accessible information is for everyone. And so, yes, and I've just, it's always pleasant to be here. It's always enjoyable to be here. Every person I've ever interacted with on the stage is, yeah, is amazing.
Thank you. Next question, Ellen. What major challenges do you expect the library to face in the next three to five years? And if elected, what will you propose to help the library prepare to meet these challenges? What major challenges do you expect the library to face in the next three to five years? And if you are elected, what will you propose to help the library prepare to meet those challenges?
Well, I would say persistent challenges, just funding, right? And making sure the money is, I'm so sorry. I would say a consistent challenge is funding is always for most things. So making sure that's finding new funding. Making sure that is where it's been increasing that. And I mean, as far as staying in touch with the community, making sure we are accommodating the needs that are out there. We have a beautifully diverse community and there's a lot of varied needs out there and, you know, as we know, sometimes needs vary and opinions vary, but I think as long as we're servicing the community, we're doing them justice. So yes, that's the best I got.
Thank you. Maria, same question?
So I think the legislation. The only reason I say that is because of what's coming from the federal government with the current parent, parent rights bill. I feel like Illinois is a strong state where we have a Secretary of State who proposed House Bill 2789, you know, which has been excellent because, excellent in the way that we shouldn't have or ban books within our own communities. We should have a process that's in place where we shouldn't prevent parents who want to make that choice for their kids to have access to materials. So for me, I commend our state of Illinois for having, you know, legislation like that that gives access to materials for people that need it.
Thank you. Next question, Maria. The current strategic plan identifies patron experience, literacy, access and equity and sharing our story as the four key initiatives. Which initiative are you the most excited about and why?
I think that's hard. That's hard for me to think about or choose. I always lean towards equity. I think we're doing so many things to move towards equity for our community and what we have, we have available, what we have access and also equity for our staff. We wouldn't be here if we didn't have the employees that we have dedicated to working in our library system. So anything that we could do to make things equitable for everyone, to have access to materials, to have access to a great working environment. I think that's really what I, what I'm proud of.
Thank you. Same question. Do I have to repeat?
Sure, yes.
The current strategic plan identifies patron experience, literacy, access and equity and sharing our story as the four key initiatives. Which initiative are you the most excited about and why?
All of them. Literacy and equity are the, as much as I'll chunk it down because they're just all very important. I'm, my first language is not English, so and since working with literacy at DuPage, I've just, I was lucky to have an English-speaking parent, even though my person, which was not English, and it's just so important in our lives to have that and and equity, of course, because everyone deserves to have the same access, the same opportunities, the same information in a user-friendly way, whether that's by legal or, you know. Yes, and I think we do such an amazing job as it is, which is why it would be just an honor to just learn more, help more, contribute more at this level. Did I cover one?
Yeah. Ellen, if we had unlimited resources, what's the one big idea you would want the library to implement?
Oh, no. There's so many. I mean, I, I would say just more community-based services with more like economic assistance perhaps, or just expanding on, on what's already in place. Because I think there's so much in place already and it's, it does always come down, a big part of it is sometimes people's time and outing, but money is always, always so important to have. So I would hate to pretend to just like have one super big one that I could talk on well. So, yes.
Thank you, Maria.
I would say continuing with our phase two and our phase three of our renovation. You know, I really want us to have more access to community space. We definitely do a really good job of collaborating, you know, with College of DuPage for our ESL and citizenship classes. You know, we also provide programs and adult programs within our building. We just do not have enough meeting space for all the programs that we want to offer that we make available to our community.
Thank you. Maria, have you regularly attended our board meetings in the past? What was your biggest takeaway from these meetings?
Yes, I have, since I have to run them. I mean, I'm here, I have. I'm here pretty much every meeting, making sure that, you know, we go over our agenda item for transparent. We let our community know what we're discussing at these meetings and we're always open to people coming in to even ask us questions during most times.
Thank you. Ellen, same question?
No, embarrassingly so. No, not regularly and therefore I have no takeaway. I was a little more focused on some school board stuff, which is not an excuse. So, but yeah, in either way, I would love to just be more involved at that level. I think I took for granted a little bit that there's so many resources here that I don't personally need. So even though I advocate for them, I just, yeah, have been guilty of not being informed enough in the past. And after getting involved in some things recently, I just felt like this would be such a great way to try to give back more, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ellen, how can the Board of Trustees assist the library staff to ensure they provide the best service for the community?
I'm so sorry. Can you even read that?
How can the Board of Trustees assist the library staff to ensure they provide the best service for the community?
I would personally listen to whatever they tell me because they are each trained experts and more familiar. I, I feel like I have a decent understanding of my community, but of course, like our job is to listen, is to hear, is to determine what they're telling us is needed and represent that as best as possible. With staff specifically, yeah, I would never tell someone how to do their job. So I would love to just be on this upward path of just learning, learning, learning the ins and outs of all this, so I can serve as best as possible.
Thank you. Maria, same question?
I definitely think we do a good job of collaborating with our staff. I definitely think as a Board of Trustees, definitely being, I don't wanna say more involved, but you know, checking in with the director, making sure, you know, that staff have opportunities to, you know, talk to us and that we're approachable, which we are. But what I like about our collaboration is that we do have some of our, sometimes our department heads will come to our board meetings to kind of let us know, you know, what's going on in that particular department. I think a nice window to their world is getting reports as a library board person, you know, being able to read all the amazing things that our staff are doing.
Thank you. Last question for Maria. Imagine you've been on the Board of Trustees for two years. How will the library have changed in that time?
That is a great question. In two years, definitely, if I'm thinking about what would happen in two years, definitely the renovation, you know, is what will happen with the reconfiguring of space, which will give our patrons a lot more access to certain, I don't wanna say access, but they'll reconfigure the spaces easily accessible to our patrons. Also, our programming space will have expanded and we'll be partnering up with Swan, which will also give them access to a lot more resources. So those are things that I'm proud of, that will be happening in the future years to come.
Thank you. Ellen, same question?
I mean, just advancing in what we determine is important and continuing these services and resources and maintaining facilities, expanding in whatever way is needed, so we can just increase our impact on the community, which is why we're here then. You know, again, how that specifically happens is, is a little more complicated than I'm gonna pretend to understand, but just keep doing what we're doing even more and more and more is my oversimplified answer.
Thank you.
Thank you. So thank you to the candidates for answering our questions. Now we want to give them an opportunity to answer your question. So if anyone has a question, please pretend it's a question, raise your hand and pass.
Can you explain what renovations and what we are?
So I will, I should defer to, Mary, can I defer to you to talk a little bit about, we're on our phase two, correct, Mary? For our extension or our fees, we were just expanding the library a little bit out in the building. If we can figure space.
All right, when this building, the current building we're in was built in 2008, we had an original plan for the building and a budget, and it had to be scaled back a little bit based on the available funding. So we went from an $18 million project down to a $13, $14 million project. And we created a schematic design for phase two of the project, which would be completed one day. And our Board of Trustees since then has been putting money aside in our capital reserve fund as funds are available at the end of the year to save for that future expansion. And about two years ago now, our auditors let us know we needed to look forward with that plan because of the amount of funding we have accumulated in that fund. We need to start creating a more specific plan that just someday will do phase two. And so we started talking to the community and looking at the ways people are using our building and figuring out what could we do to improve this space. One of the things that we know is an issue are the number of students from Indian Trail, the Crest Street that come here after school. So part of the renovation would create better separation between the active areas where the junior high students like to spend time in the library after school and will create better zoning for quieter areas for adults or people who wanna study or work quietly in the library. Right now, there's sort of some friction. If you come here for, you know, the first 90 minutes after the school day lets out, sometimes there's frictions between different ways people wanna use the library. So we'll hope, our goal is to improve on that. This meeting room is, serves us well, but as Maria said, we have lots of outside community groups, homeowners associations and all kinds of community organizations that would like to hold meetings in our library. We want to welcome them here, but they're competing with us for our own programming space with organizations like College of DuPage who wanna offer classes here. So having additional meeting room space and reconfigured spaces, this room has a lot of square footage, but this pillar is kind of in the way. So this whole section of the room is not usable for most things. So we'll redesign the meeting room spaces to be more functional and hopefully allow us to do more of what the community is showing us they need. We'll also have a greater number of smaller conference rooms and study rooms for adults to use because those are very well-used and we have time limits on those and they turn up or quickly off throughout the day. As more people are working remotely, sometimes they need to get out of their house and they're coming to the library to work remotely. People make tutors here, adults and children, all kinds of people using those spaces. So there's another, a number of things we hope to accomplish, but we'll be using funding that has already been set aside for this purpose. Our goal, we're working with architects now. We just hired a construction management firm. We should be ready to go up to bid for the project in September of this year. The actual work will begin hopefully by December or maybe January 2024, and will take about 12 months to complete.
Are you increasing the square footage of this building?
We are, and I can't tell you by how much, but just by one meeting room size, we'll be built out to the west, this grassy area right beyond this room.
Correct process, program process?
Yeah, behind, well, there'll be an inside program here. So there is an extension here and then next to it there will also be a landscape very designed to hold outdoor programming. We found out during the pandemic, we when we needed greater social distancing, we did storytimes outside. We did some of our adult programs outside and people really enjoyed fresh air. But the, the grass out here is pretty uneven. It's not landscaped particularly well for that. And we don't have seating, we just take these meeting room chairs outside and put them in the grass. So now we'll create a more specifically landscaped outside programming area as part of the house. Yes.
Is any thought given to additional parking?
I shouldn't have been there.
I come here, what is in session, village is in session. Things through, I mean, as a veteran, June and I, I ended up in the street and I could walk to my house.
Well, if you've been here briefly.
We need additional parking.
We will not get additional parking, but I can tell you that DuPage coming traffic court no longer is held in Addison. So they used to tie up a lot of our parking spaces during the week and they're not here anymore. So
I wasn't aware of that.
There's been a significant improvement in that way. We don't actually own the parking lot. That belongs to the village. And so any expansion to that area or changes in configuration of parking would have to be a village project.
They would have funded, no?
Correct.
There was one over here, and then you had a question to you.
I was wondering, you're talking about funding and I was wondering, maybe the ladies up in front, couldn't you explain? Where actually do you get the funding from?
Good question. We get it from, we also get it from per capita grant money. We also get it from our funding here from local taxes as well. So whenever we, the last, since I've been president, three of the six years, we do raise our tax subsidy. So our funding also comes from taxes.
And I also had another question. I was told recently because of the question about some of the books that are in our library, that you would not get funding if any, you know, if there was like books get, were taken out of there, they haven't been, it need to be taken out.
Yeah, so the House Bill 2789 that was passed in the ranks within the libraries, we also need to adopt our own policies that have some set structure that prohibits the, the practice of banning books. So if we ban books, we don't get per capita grant money.
Sort of along the same line as banning books. Does the library have a process by which books are evaluated both before they're put on the shelves and after? Whereas by, just from, to the vehicles?
I like your question. We do have a process in place. Karen Deanie, who is a part of our collection development, actually came to speak at one of our board meetings to talk about what the process is. There is an application that patrons can fill out depending on the book, you know, that they are proposing that they wanna take off the shelf or that they actually have to read the book, you know, and talk about why they think the book should be on the shelf. But a lot of the books that we can place in our library are based off recommendations from the Illinois Library Association. A lot of our books are researched, right? They're read or peer-reviewed, right? And they're recommended by libraries for us to put on the shelves. They also help us recommend where we put them on the shelves as well.
Yeah. So I have a question. What would either of you say differentiates you from each other? Like, what makes you different from Ellen and Ellen different from Maria? Like what?
Oh, nothing, actually. We're running together. Yeah.
We are running together, so similar views in what we believe a library should offer and what we believe libraries should continue to offer and what we feel we need to offer our community.
Yeah, awesome.
Yeah. Does that, does that help?
That answers it. I didn't know much, and so I just liked the very first part, so. And are we missing two people today or one person?
So one gentleman couldn't make it because of work.
Oh, okay.
And then I didn't read something about the Virginia before you came in about other candidates.
Okay.
You can choose to show up. Other. And I said, what would you show up for?
Yeah.
What would you say, aside from the building and the expansions, this question for each of you, what would you say?
This question reached you. What would you say is the biggest need that the library needs to, in order to grow, to change?
That's a good question. Oh, what do we need to grow? Um, and you said, don't say renovation, don't say the others. Yeah, correct, it is. Um, what is need for us to grow, I think is continue to evolve and offer programming, right? Offer accessible programming, um, that in, and when I say accessible, like. Now we're moving towards, you know, Zoom for for some of the programs that we offer, so making things. Available for people that need it. We're trying to move in that direction with technology, right? So growing in that area where we're able to offer more things to our patrons.
I don't have much to add, just expanding on what's currently existing and just moving forward in general. Technology, services, resources, um, funding, always more funding wherever we can hear it, not necessarily just some pictures, so.
Other questions?
I did hear that the library is evolving uh for the future. It's not like a Dewey Decimal System of course now. Or is, you know, is that, um, it's just how are they evolving for the future?
So definitely the way that we place books on the shelf, right? We, the way that we do it now, like in water or library. You could see that we have books, uh, at least in the children's department by themes, thematic, um, I don't want to say themes, so like social skills play. You know, so when you think of the Dewey Decimal, yes, we still have things by author and, you know, uh, number within the nonfiction section. But the way that we present our collection does look very different, is more accessible to people in the library.
Other question?
How many people are. Running, seeing movement. How many people? Um, okay. Running for trustees, how many openings and how many people are running? I've got nothing in the mail or anything like that for previous years. I've got, you know.
So.
So, so there is, uh, for the six year term, there is uh three seats, five people are running. Um, three other people are not here and then there's a two year seat, um, the person couldn't be here because of work. Um, and then running for the two year spot.
Two years.
The two year uh term, right, for everyone? The way that we put it on, the way that it's placed on a ballot, you have people voting for a six year term and then you have people voting for a two year, two year term for the library. So they're not locked in the same, does that make sense?
The two year term, are there remaining two years?
Oh, yeah.
Fire before you let.
How many people got before there's not, it's not, I mean, one, they're, yeah.
But there's how many for the other position? Five people running with three, so three.
Yeah, because in the past years, I've always gotten something too, and this year I didn't get anything in the mail. I actually found out about this like on Facebook or something. And I'm like, usually I'll get like a pamphlet or something from the library or somebody will say, hey, what's going on? I found out yesterday, the library cannot spend money on, uh, can't, I would have had, so it wouldn't have come from the library. Yeah, I know, I got something, it's like hanging on my door.
Probably, if you guys saw your pamphlet earlier, maybe you may, answer the question.
Well, uh, as a former trustee. If, if the person who is running for a seat wishes to have their candidacy, that's who we have to do it.
Maybe that's what that has done.
Unless I was part of a political or established political organization that will fund the advertising. Uh, other than that, I guess, you know, who you meet, who you convince that you're capable of doing it.
Gotcha.
Ma'am.
Um, if I come to the library and we move without that. Luncheon. You know, but there's kids with special needs. Like, I, I know this is time, somebody just walked out of there with a cookie. I said, let's forget that. It's a gift. I think those kids need a little more notice. What can be done, like scuffing, uh, popping and. Getting coffee when you walk in the door. I mean, those kids need, I found my blessings with my children. Um, there's nothing that says that they.
Is it the person possibilities? Is that what you're talking about?
I don't know what it's.
Yeah, so we partner up, right? We're at the District Eighty Eight and District Eighty Eight students run it, so we run it on, they run it for a limited uh time, so it's not open. Um, during certain hours, but it's part of the program that they're part of in school.
But you put, you put like home stuff, I see is that you make a little nice home stuff, stop it.
So you're saying advertising?
I think those kids, you know, they're doing nothing because nobody's there to buy a cookie or anything like that. I don't know if everybody else knew they were there. I accidentally did, and every time they're there, I don't go in and they couldn't be at any nicer to me.
Well, I appreciate your suggestion, so there, the ever, yeah.
Ma'am.
Yes, so this, I'm not sure if this question, your utilities are married, it has to do with the renovation. Is the, what are the plans for fixing the book drop off? Because that has not worked since libraries.
So that is a good question. We're planning to make it a drive, we're planning to make it a drive, correct, Mary? Where you're actually able to check in your materials, because right now you drop them in the drop box and they, someone has to manually. Get them from the drop box and put them on the balance to check it in for you. So we would be using a drop box, not a drop box, a conveyor belt, right, that automatically takes out, correct, Mary? Like a drive up window and then a person should be at the window, correct?
The issue is, Isabel, that thing has never worked because you've got to get out of your car to do it, so what is the point of the drive up? I hear, I know. You're frustrated, I mean, it's a lot, but it is really aggravating and we can't, we can't.
We tried once to fix it, it was not successful. Uh, I will say, the original architect on this building did warn us. That he wasn't sure we would get the right angle to make this successful, but. The board at the time told him this was one of the things the community wanted most from this library. We need to have it, and so they did the best we could. I agree, it's never worked well. Uh, we do hope we're improving at this time. There will be a complete reconfiguration of that drive, hopefully with a better angle. And as Maria said, it will be a full fledged drive up window. So you can also, if you have books on hold, you can pick them up at the window. Right now we have curbside pickup. So for maybe seniors with mobility issues or parents who have kids in car seats that don't want to unstrap everybody just to run in and pick something up quick. You can get a curbside. That service is most popular on days when the weather is the worst. And that means that our employees have to go out into that implement weather to deliver your things to your car. So the drive up window will still address that need, uh, but make it a little easier for us because the staff person can stay on the inside. Um, but the current architects know about these challenges and are working with engineers to hopefully solve that problem.
So could you just make sure that they know that people want to be able to stay in their car?
Yes, absolutely.
But that is, that angle, we can't reach the stupid thing.
Yeah, in fact, our insurance, and you should have told us that we don't want people getting out of their car from an insurance standpoint, that's. Should not happen. Well, I I can't tell people they can't get out of their car because. Uh, if you have a small enough vehicle and you're better maneuvering than I am, I've seen people do it, but I can't do it. They know I'm a pretty good driver, but.
Ma'am, can you tell us, Chris, the um anticipated expenditure for phase one or renovation two and renovation three?
So we don't have anything, correct, Mary, for phase three because that we have to do our phase two when nothing's been approved for phase three?
Tonight is the first I've ever heard of phase three. I think Maria's dreaming. We're working on phase two now and a year ago, the board approved it not to exceed amount of thirteen point one million dollars. But we don't have our cost estimates done yet. That amount was based on the money available that we already have. Leaving enough money in capital reserve to cover future maintenance needs. We have a. A maintenance schedule that shows us how much money we should set aside for. Maintenance of our existing facility for various projects going forward, so that when the time comes that we need to repair or replace our roof, the money will be there. And uh, so this budget was set based on available funding with keeping money in reserve for those future needs.
Thank you, Mary.
Other question?
Okay, well, I'd like to thank everybody for visiting with us tonight and taking an active part in our community. I want to thank Maria and Ellen for being here to answer your questions and also Missy for um. For moderating this event. Just to let you know, the one person who seemed just as prominent as these two individuals in front, Mary is our library director, so.